Thank you for joining us for the 2020 Victorville City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce. I am Marshall Haprov with the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District and it is an honor to serve this forum as your moderator. This is one of four candidate forums and the candidates participating today were divided into their respective groups using a blind draw system. We'll ask a series of questions for each candidate to answer. This is not a debate and we do not encourage our participants to refute or rebut how their opponent answers the questions. Each candidate will have one minute for opening comments. We will then proceed to the question and answer portion. Each candidate has up to 90 seconds to answer each question. We will finish up with closing statements, again with one minute for each candidate. Each of you participating in this forum has the ability to unmute yourself when I introduce or call on you to answer. Your time starts when you begin speaking. Please remember to mute yourself when you are finished speaking. If you unmute yourself and attempt to disrupt another candidate's time or disrupt this forum in any other way, we will restrict your ability to unmute yourself. We are recording this forum and will publish it on the Victor Valley Chambers website and social media platforms. Our timekeeper tonight is Mark Crefield, the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce President and CEO. Mark will start the timer when you begin speaking and will hold up a green sign. When you have 15 seconds left during opening remarks, the Q and A portion and closing statement, he will then hold up a yellow sign. He will then hold up a red sign indicating your time has expired. I will then thank you and we will mute your microphone or of course we ask that you mute it on your own. I would now like to introduce four of the 22 hopefuls who are running for the Victorville City Council election and joining us today. In alphabetical order, Valentin Godina, Ashiko Newman, Michael Stevens, Adam Verduzko. Karima Abdul Kabir was originally scheduled to participate in this session, however, she was unable to join us at recording time. We will now begin with opening comments. The order in which the candidates will speak was also using a blind draw system. This will be rotated after each question. We will begin with Valentin Godina. You have one minute. Valentin, this is your one-minute opening remark.
You can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you once again for putting this forum together in these unprecedented times. This is the only way we can communicate and get our message across. I am interested in running to represent the residents of Victorville. I am currently in the hospital right now and I'm talking to you from my hospital bed. I have a a neighbor here who's pretty sick and he's a, he'll be talking and he'll be interrupting a little here and there. I've been, I've lived in the high desert for over 30 years. My, I raised a family here in Victorville. They went through the schools here. I understand the history of Victorville and I understand the future that Victorville has to offer. And that's why I am running for city council of Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Verduzko, you have one minute.
Yes, good evening, Victorville. My name is Adam Verduzko. As a first responder who's been serving in Victorville for over 12 years, I've been given the tremendous opportunity of being able to serve you in your time of need. Throughout the course of my career, I've identified several issues that I feel we all could agree need some work and that's why I have decided to run for city council. If awarded the opportunity to serve on council, I would like to strengthen public safety, revitalize downtown and beautify any city-owned property and make this a desirable destination for people who want an affordable place to live and businesses who want to grow and have an expanding market. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Stevens, you have one minute.
Thank you for allowing me to participate. I can tell you right now, for more information about me, you can visit my website, www.mikestevens.us or you can visit me on Facebook. Vote for the number four, Mike Stevens. I have been in the high desert for 43 years and resident of Victorville for 33 years. I think I bring a unique background and perspective to city council. I served on the planning commission for five and a half years. I served on the city's legislative review committee twice. I have been an employee in city government, county government, special districts government, and I'm a retired and decorated 25-year Air Force veteran. So I bring a lot of government experience to the table and I think that experience will help me to understand how to get things done and how to move things forward. I'll share later what my platform is and I really would appreciate you vote come November 3rd. Thank you for allowing me to participate.
Thank you. Ashiko Newman, you have one minute.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ashiko Newman. I've been a resident of the high desert for over 20 years. The past five years I've been a resident specifically in Victorville. I'm a mom, I'm a wife, military veteran. I am just passionate about our city. I've been a social worker for the last 11 years, faithfully serving our community in many different capacities. I'm not a politician. I have no political background, but I am a resident, a resident with passion and excitement to see growth in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will now begin with the questions. Each candidate will have up to 90 seconds to answer each question. I want to remind you all again to be aware of the timekeeper and please wrap up your answer before we are obligated to mute you. Question one. Serving as a council member, you are responsible for helping lead a multimillion-dollar municipal corporation. What skills, experience and education do you have that suggests Victorville's residents should trust you with their city? Adam Verduzko, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you. For the past four years, I've been honored to serve on the Board of Directors to the Cypress Point Homeowners Association. We are a small community here in Victorville with just over 300 homes. Two of those years I've been appointed president and I've displayed the ability along with my to, I've displayed the ability to work with my fellow board members to enforce bylaws, set and maintain budgets, make improvements to the community as needed and maintain my fiduciary responsibility to the homeowners. I feel this experience is relative because even though we're one small community, part of a bigger city, we're all faced with the same problems. We all see the same issues and at the end of the day, we're all just trying to make our city a better place to live.
Thank you. Same question. Michael Stevens, you have 90 seconds.
Okay. First of all, I have a bachelor's degree in business administration. I've served as a manager and supervisor in both capacities, city, county. I have run my own small business since 2006, although I've never managed a multimillion-dollar budget. I think the principles are the same. You have to be able to analyze. You have to be able to evaluate and you have to be able to assess how the monies are going to be spent. You have to know how to budget. You have to know how to monitor your expenditures and the revenues. I think those are key qualities that no matter how many, how big a budget you've managed, you have to have those skills to do that. And I've done that. I've had supervisory and management positions throughout my career and I think that experience is something that will help me to become an effective council member.
Thank you. Ashiko Newman, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you very much. I would just like to say that I have earned a bachelor's degree in social work as well as my master's degree in social work. I'm currently in a management position as a, as a social worker for a private agency and as such, I work with my, with my other leaders to develop a balanced budget each year to make sure that our agency follows contract obligations. I definitely have an understanding of policy, of contracts, of regulations and how those things follow through to make sure that our, our organization is running smoothly. This is, we do have a large business here and we do have to make sure that our funds are evenly distributed and that at the end of the year, we have a balanced budget and we are definitely working hard to make sure that happens. I would love for that experience to translate into the, into our city.
Thank you. Valentin Godina, you have 90 seconds.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for the question. I respect all the people that have committed their time to getting degrees and learning all these educations and getting all these letters in front of their names. I think they deserve a lot of respect for it. I am a simple common sense man. In my 30 years in Victorville, I ran a music program on a shoestring budget that served over 350 children and through the program, they were able to graduate high school. Out of 12 kids that I raised, seven of them are professionals and they earn a very good living and they still ask me to help them how to budget their, their money so they can pay their, their home and put food on their table. So, common sense outweighs a lot of things and it goes hand in hand with a lot of the education that we currently have in city council that has brought us to the position we're in right now. So we need common sense now to guide us out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number two. In May 2020, the Victorville City Council accepted a public safety plan that described how it would expand its public safety levels. That plan also recommended the cost for an expanded level of service and the revenue necessary through measure P. Have you read the public, public safety plan and do you support measure P? Michael Stevens, you have 90 seconds. Michael Stevens, you're still muted?
I thought you would do that. Yes, I have read the 94-page plan, public safety plan. I support it. I support measure P. The last fiscal year, 2019, 2020, the city was behind $2.8 million because of this COVID environment. This current budget year, 2021, $4.3 million they're behind. The sheriff's contract has been increasing 6% for the last several years and 64% of the general fund revenues go towards police and fire. If measure P passes, it'll generate $15 million in the first year. That'll help us to increase response times, to put more police on the street. And I think it's something that most people can absorb. If you spend $60 on gas, the tax would be 60 cents. You spend $100, it's $1. So I don't think people would go broke by supporting measure P and it's something I wholeheartedly support because with crime being the way it is, we need to bolster our staffing at our police station. So yes, I support measure P all the way.
Thank you. Ashiko Newman, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you very much. I have read over the public safety plan. Excuse me. And I'm definitely in support of measure P. I think that public safety is a, is a big issue for not only the council but for our constituents as well. After they completed the the, the, the survey, the, the, the public has, has, has expressed that they have an interest in public safety and they want to us, the city of Victorville, to increase our public safety measures. And so measure P is definitely going to make sure that we, we have the resources to do that. Our law enforcement, our fire, our code enforcement, they need the support of, of our residents and this is the way that our city is going to have, have an ability to increase revenue so that our, our law enforcement officers are getting the training that they need, the equipment that they need. Just look at what's going on. Our, our country is in a state of unrest, specifically garnered towards law enforcement. There needs to be additional revenue so that our law enforcement can get the necessary training that they need in order to better serve and to protect our communities. In addition to that, our fire department, they're stretched thin, especially now with all the fires. We need to, to fully support and back our, 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 our officers as well as our residents to keep us safe, to keep the city of Victorville safe.
Thank you. Valentin Godina, you have 90 seconds.
Police force. But when we spend over 50% of our budget on police force and 1% on social service programs, we unbalance what is happening with our residents. I live in the downtown area, so I understand exactly what's going on. We need social services to get social service programs to take some of the pressures off our police force. Our police force are professional police officers. They are not social service professionals. We asked them to be, but we're putting more pressure on them than what they hired on to be. So we need to level that balance and allow them to be police officers and bring back social services that will help out our community so that we can take these pressures off the community and off the police officers. Readjusting the, the budget. In a COVID time like this, asking people to sacrifice food on their table to pay taxes is not a very good idea.
Thank you. Adam Verduzko, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you. I have reviewed measure P and I am wholeheartedly in support of it. Not to tell you why. When you look at crime statistics in our city, it's clear that crime is on the rise. Violent crime, property crime, it's running rampant through our town. And the reason being is sheriff's department staffing levels have not been increased since 2008. That means since 2008, we have roughly six to eight deputies on patrol every day. That is one deputy for every 16,000 people. When ideally, we should have one deputy for every 10,000 people. In 2008, the sheriff's department received, I think, 98,000 calls for service and in 2019, it was 126,000. So our deputies are spending more time responding to calls for service than proactively patrolling our communities and we are seeing the effects of that. Fire Station 313, they run 7,500 calls annually. A lot of our population growth is occurring there on the Bear Valley 395 corridor. We have a beautiful fire station, 315, on Eucalyptus that for the past several years is not staffed. Measure P would allow us to staff that station, sorry, decreasing response times in that area and serving that population and also court enforcement. With more court enforcement, we can ensure that our businesses are kept up and our communities are looking good. Thank you.
Thank you. Question three. If elected, what policy goals do you have for the city? And how do you envision accomplishing these goals if they are in conflict with the policy goals of your colleague council members? Ashiko Newman, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you very much. There are some goals that I would like to initiate. Number one, I would like to, I would hope to work with the council to resolve the, the race, racial issue that's currently going on and that our country is facing. We need race reconciliation. We need measures so that we're able to go out and, and consult with our constituents, have one-on-one conversations with fire department, law enforcement, first responders on a quarterly basis so that we're, we're putting more than just a number to a situation, but we have a name to a family. And this is going to, hopefully this measure can, can resolve some of the issues of trust, a lack of trust between first responders and the community. I, I highly favor the, the, that we are able to, to provide some measure for race reconciliation in our country, I'm sorry, in our city. And then also, I would like to see there being some type of, of auditing system with our law enforcement. We don't need to police the police. They have, they have, they have programs for that. But what I like, would like to see is that there, there's an audit for the, for the contract that we have so that we can ensure that our officers are doing the things that are necessary for the city of Victorville, specific trainings, specific equipment that they can have, just making sure that they are overall, there's an overall checks and balances in the, in what we.
Thank you. Valentin Godina, you have 90 seconds.
My, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the question. Yes, very interesting question and our council members need to be reminded, not by another council member, but by our residents, our stakeholders, that their job is to work together and work in their best interest. I've been involved in sports all my life. I was a captain of various soccer teams. I was the director of a music program where I, I brought together children to play mariachi music and I got them to play as a team where we went on to win various competitions in other mariachi competitions, groups that were backed by hundreds and thousands of dollars while ours was on a shoestring budget. We were able to take first and second places in various competitions. So I am somebody that wants to, that is able to bring people together and I can accept criticism and I can accept being wrong as long as we become a team and we keep our goal of providing services to our community. So I am able to do that and I have proven myself to do that and that's what I will bring to the council. Bring unity and bring a vision for all of us to work together for the benefit of our community.
Thank you. Adam Verduzko, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you. If elected onto council, there are two policy goals that I, that I have in mind that I would like to bring to the table. So the very first one being is our, our city is, is about half-developed. That means we have a lot of room for growth and with that growth, we need to find ways to continue funding our public safety. So, and we have to find ways to keep, keep our city looking good. So I would, I, I feel that any new community in the city of Victorville that is built should be required to be an HOA. And the reason being, HOAs, they build their own amenities. They build their own parks. They build their own recreation centers, clubhouses, et cetera. They enforce their own bylaws. They contribute to our local economy. They hire local contractors, local insurance vendors, et cetera. And as, as our city grows, you look at in the city of Victorville, you can build four houses on one acre compared to one to two in surrounding cities. As the city grows, I think in the future, we need to explore community facilities districts, bring these communities in at a slightly higher tax rate so that they can fund their own law enforcement, their own fire stations, their own code enforcement, et cetera. They're already doing this down the hill and people are absolutely going for it. And that way, those people come in, they pay their fair share without having to put a further strain on the other taxpayers in the city.
Thank you. Michael Stevens, you have 90 seconds.
I have several common sense, what I call election priorities. The first of which is to promote economic development and financial stability. I think most council members would agree. We should do whatever we can to try to create jobs for our community, for our residents. But not only should we be doing things like to attract new businesses, we should also be doing things to retain businesses that are already here. So that's a policy goal that I think most, most council members would agree with. The other one we've already touched on is protecting public safety. We cannot allow our community to become a war zone. So I think that would be something that most council members would get behind. The council adopted a strategic plan. I think we should implement that. That's a pretty solid and sane goals in there. So I think that, and along with the fact that trying to provide dignity and accountability to our residents and our constituents. So three things, promote economic development and financial stability, protect public safety and provide dignity and accountability. Those are the policy goals that I think I would try to implement and get my colleagues to go along with.
Thank you. Question four. What is your plan to deal with the homeless crisis in Victorville? Valentin Godina, you have 90 seconds.
Crisis is something that has been around for quite a while and it's not just a Victorville problem. It is a county and state issue that needs to be involved in helping us through with this. Although Victorville has taken the lead in putting up a 168 homeless community in the Old Town Center of Victorville, it is still need, more needs to be worked with, with the state and the county to to improve downtown because downtown is the history and the birthplace of Victorville and we cannot just be using it as an experimental area for these projects. We need to experiment in bringing business and reviving our library and bringing social programs there that are going to help the community out of the situation that they are in. We need boys' clubs, girls' clubs, something to start building our base, something to start building our youth. We can't just let it become a center for homeless people. Yes, our homeless need to be serviced and we also need to make sure that the homeless that we serve are, are residents and not from out of county or out of state. We need to make sure that those residents that need help, that are from outside, get the help that they deserve from their cities or counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Verduzko, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, thank you. Currently, I believe there are just over 300 and some homeless people living in the city of Victorville. That number is up 25% or so from the last year. So our homeless population is increasing. I have reason to believe that it is not increasing organically. I have reason to believe that some of these homeless people are coming to us from surrounding areas looking for something different. So it's a problem that we all see. So the city of Victorville currently, or sorry, recently received money for a homeless shelter, 150 or so beds. That's going to serve approximately half of our current homeless population. But many of our homeless population, they, they suffer from drug abuse, alcohol addiction, mental illness. So we're going to need to pull different resources. It's not just about housing. It's about counseling, rehabilitation services. So we're going to need to, to use any resource we have, the sheriff's department, help team. You know, the housing authority. It's, it's going to be a group effort. All three cities need to come together and, and fix this homeless situation. It shouldn't just be Victorville's, Victorville's problem. So that's, and when, when we are able to, to give them somewhere to stay, then we, we can then enforce trespassing and lording laws and kind of help force them in the right direction.
Thank you. Michael Stevens, you have 90 seconds.
My plan is, is common sense too. Why reinvent the wheel? The city created a homelessness solutions task force. They created a strategic action plan and we need to give that plan time to be implemented and executed. It seems to be well thought out. They brought in a number of partners. I agree that this shouldn't be something that shoulders exclusively by the city of Victorville and the homelessness solutions task force has done that. They've identified other partners. So I think that why, why fix it? So I think that why, why fix it if it ain't broke? So we've got a plan in place. We need to make sure we've got the resources in place to be able to execute and carry out that plan. And we also should make sure that we're looking at homelessness from a dual perspective. One, to try to get people off the street, but also to look at it from a prevention standpoint and look at the causal factors. What caused these people to be on the street in the first place? What resources can we put into place? What partners can we identify to make sure we're addressing issues like substance abuse? If people don't have transportation, people don't have a job, people don't know how to read, whatever those factors that might be contributing to them being on the street. Let's make sure we're identifying those and putting the resources in place to address them upfront and not just continue to wait until it's reactive on the back end and try to get people off the street. So I think we need to look at trying to develop not just temporary solutions of putting them in a shelter, but trying to get them into permanent homes and affordable house. So the plan I have is to follow what's already in place.
Thank you. Ashiko Newman, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to echo the sentiments of the other candidates. I definitely support the hundred and sixty-eight bed homeless complex that is currently in, in place that we're going to implement in the city of Victorville. I think it's really, really great that this is, this agency, this apartment complex, I'm sorry, this complex is going to have a vetting process, which is going to, which everybody won't get in. But those who really need the services, those who can benefit from the services will have the opportunity to, to get into the complex. This complex is going to offer mental health services, drug addiction services, job, job search, medical treatment, all of the things that are really pervasive in the homeless community. It, 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 it's really necessary that we bring the homeless population down, be up below that sixty percent threshold so that we're able to, to reinforce, I would say relocation from public areas, downtown areas, areas where people are shopping and living. It's, it's really a big problem, but again, we need, we do need to be proactive in our search. We need to be, to be able to address the multiple levels of need that our homeless residents have because it's not just a matter of shelter. Are these, these individuals are there for, for, for whatever reasons, but we do have a plan in place. And I would hope that other cities can, can use this as a pilot program and implement them in their cities as well.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your answers. We will conclude today's forum with closing remarks. And we will begin with Adam Verduzco. You have one minute.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. If elected on the city council, you will never have to question my commitment to the city. I've been serving in the city for over twelve years and I will continue to, to do so whether or not I get the seat. I hope that your vision for Victorville is a safer Victorville, a cleaner Victorville, a thriving metropolis because if I'm elected on the city council, that is what I will strive to give you.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael Stevens, you have one minute.
Okay. I believe I have the time, I have the talent, I have the temperament to serve as a council member. I'm not looking for a career in the city council. I'm not looking to use it as a stepping stone to our office. I've grown pretty weary of the friction, the dissension, the animosity, the bickering that's been going on for the last four years. And I think I can be the type of person who can bring stability, respectability, and credibility back to the council. I have skills in city government, as I've indicated, county government, special district government, and federal government. So I have knowledge about what it takes to get things done. And having that experience, I think, is something that the city council needs at this point in time. So November third, forty-two days away, please remember me. Visit my website, www.mikestevens.us for more information about my background, my qualifications, and my vision. And I very much appreciate you vote and thank you, chamber, for offering this, for offering this call.
Thank you. Ashiko Newman, you have one minute.
Thank you guys again for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today. Again, there are some issues that are pretty heavy on my heart, which is the reason why I, I chose to become a candidate for this seat. I am really passionate about public safety and making sure that our community is a safe place for our residents. I am also passionate about the economic stimulation of our city and ensuring that we have jobs that are going to provide our residents with a living wage. I'm definitely passionate about race, race reconciliation, providing an atmosphere for our community and our first responders and law enforcement to come together. I'm also big on community advocacy. We have an issue with homelessness. We have an issue with sex trafficking. We have an issue with, with the disabled community and all of those people have a voice and I plan to be that voice. I've been a social worker in the community, serving faithfully for two, for eleven years. I am a leader that is going to lead, lead honorably. A great servant is first a good leader and I'm a great leader. I am number fifteen on the ballot. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Valentin Godina, you have one minute.
Yes, thank you. The minute I stepped foot in Victorville, I became involved. A concerned resident that became involved in his community. You can look through the daily newspaper and you can find that I've been involved and in the front center of every concern that the city has had from day one. I am able to, to communicate with both of our major communities, the English-speaking community and the Spanish-speaking community. And I know how to bring peace and harmony between both of them because that's what I've done all my life. All my life, all my thirty years in Victorville, I have created programs and brought people together through music, through sports, and through other events that I've been involved in. If you visit my page, www.valentinggodina2020, you'll see exactly who I am and what I've done and what I can continue to do for the community of Victorville. I am not a professional politician. I am a concerned resident who wants to.
Thank you. On behalf of the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce, I would like to once again thank all of the candidates for their participation in tonight's candidate forum. This recording will be posted once all of the Victorville City Council candidate forums have been completed. Thank you again, everyone, and please continue to stay safe and healthy.